Okay, good morning, members of council, staff, invited guests and the general public. Welcome to our special meeting of Monday, June 7th. I will call the meeting to order by resolution. Madam Clerk.
Moved by councillor McGillis, seconded by councillor Laundrie that the special meeting of the council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry be hereby called to order.
Thank you. You heard the motion, all in favor. Motion's carried. Madam Clerk, if you could do a roll call, please.
Councillor Armstrong. Councillor Bybels.
Present.
Councillor Fraser.
Present.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
Councillor Laundrie.
Present.
Councillor McDonald. Councillor McGillis.
Present.
Warden Prevo.
Present.
Councillor Smith.
Present.
Councillor Warden. Thank you councillor Jaworski for attending on councillor Warden's behalf. Councillor Ward. Councillor Williams.
Present.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to number two, adoption of the agenda. Is there any additions to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
I have no additions. Mr. Warden.
Thank you. I was asked to defer item. Sorry, which one is it here? The Warden's House, number D, under tenders in quotations. So councillor Armstrong is not with us this morning, but he did. I had a conversation with him this morning. He's asked to defer that to the 21st council meeting. So if that's okay with council. Sure. Thank you. So if you can read the agenda as.
Yep. It's moved by councillor Bybels, seconded by councillor Smith, that council approved the agenda as amended.
Thank you. You heard the motion, all in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you. So we'll move right into delegations. Welcome to our MP, Mr. Eric Duncan from Stormont, Dundas and South Glengarry. So welcome, Mr. Duncan. I'll hand the floor over to you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Warden and good morning, council. You guys are the first ones. I'm going around. I've decided over the month of June, like several of my colleagues have done, which I think is a good idea, is to touch base at the council tables with our local municipalities, just to give you some updates on federal issues that are happening, that are kind of pertaining to our local region, and also just take any questions or comments that you guys have from any issues of the day going on federally. I will note that I am presenting locally, I believe, working with the clerks over the course of the month of June. And I will say, I'm not going to touch base on the water levels issue. If you have any questions today, I'm happy to take that, but I will specifically chat with South Dundas and South Stormont at the local municipal table there about some of the challenges along the river. Again, however, any issues you want there. I've narrowed it down to six in a 10-minute delegation. So if you know me, this will be a challenge, but I'll try. I also want to welcome Rachel, who is on the line here this morning on the call. Rachel is my intern for the summer and has really helped me get this stuff organized. And most of you know Adrian Buggeli, my EA. Adrian's listening on YouTube right now. So I will just share my screen and go through some brief PowerPoint notes, just to go through here and touch base on what I can. So the topics that I wanted to cover today that I think would be relevant from a federal nature are the following. I'll just get right into them and touch base on each of them. So just a note on our local constituency office, it's on Brookdale Avenue, around the corner from the county council offices. We're open Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. And the one thing, I mean, the pandemic has not produced a lot of positive things, but the one thing I will say is that we're able to do a lot of things over the phone and by email that we couldn't before. So we are open to walk-in traffic right now, again, with the stay-at-home order being lifted. But we're just encouraging people to give us a call or send us an email before they come in, just to see, may save them a trip of having to come in. For those in the west part of the municipality or satellite offices in Winchester and Morseburg, we're going to look at resuming those in the next little while. We'll work with the local municipalities and we'll advertise to people, I imagine specifically on passports, for an example. There's likely a large backup of people that will be looking to renew in the hopes of being able to travel this winter. So and I put the key contact there with Adrian. For yourselves as county council, if you have somebody or an issue that comes up, please don't hesitate, just reach out to Adrian directly, send him an email, give him a call, and we'll make sure afterwards that you have both Adrian and my direct contact information for any issues that you're hearing on the ground there. All of you are likely aware through numerous presentations from the CAO, the Warden and the Eastern Ontario Regional Network and the Warden's Caucus of the continued interest of that group on applying for broadband and cell service dollars. As you know, the cell gap funding has been confirmed. There was a challenge a couple of years ago as the project was coming to fruition, that there wasn't a specific federal pot of money available. However, they were able to work something out. Right now, the next level and the next project, as you're aware of, is the gig project to bring fiber, expand fiber to deliver it to, I think it's 95 or the, certainly the overwhelming majority of homes in rural eastern Ontario. We had a good meeting. Mayor Warden Prevo and Tim CEO Simpson were on there a couple of weeks ago with a group of bipartisan MPs from all parties, and everybody supports this project. But the two issues that remain in this unfortunately seem to be the same ones as what was around in the previous round. The funding envelope, there isn't a specific pot of money for this. So again, there's a desire to get this done, but it's trying to come up with a program. That's been very frustrating. We're working and going to be asking, you know, putting some further pressure on the government on that. And then the other thing I'll mention is timelines, and you guys would all be aware of this over the course of the last couple of years. The time that it takes for an idea to come up, to go to fruition, to be created and be studied, to find a program that it could apply for, to find an application to go in, for it to be reviewed, for it to be approved, for the legal documents to be signed, for a shovel to go into the ground, and then eventually the switch being turned on and a better service, is we're looking at five, six years on average for most of these projects. So it's very frustrating and that needs to improve. I say this constructively. There will not be a lack of money being offered to help with broadband and cell service. The issue is the timelines. If we go to somebody in Chrysler right now or in Lunenburg and say, don't worry, we've got a plan to bring better internet or cell service to rural SD and G, and the government's timelines of, say, 2025 or even some cases, 2029, I don't think people would be very happy with that response to say in five, six, seven years, you'll get better service. So one of the things that I've been pushing on and we've been talking about and giving some of our proposals of being constructive is, not only, I don't believe money will be the issue, and I mean that disrespectfully or not frugally, but it's the timelines in which we can do this and negotiating and getting these processes better lined up. So again, on the cell gap, or on the gig project, like we had with the cell gap, there's a will, there's a project, there's everything ready to go, and there's not a funding envelope for it, a formal one that would fit and meet the criteria, and we're losing several months on that. So we're on this in Ottawa, and this is something I know for all of you, when you talk to people who are moving into the area, you talk to real estate, this is single-handedly the number one issue that people are asking about today. Via rail is on the radar as a serious concern and an issue in terms of what some of the recent changes and announcements mean or don't mean for our region, in particular the Cornwall station. Alexandria, as part of the high-frequency rail network going from actually Quebec City to Montreal up to Ottawa and through a new dedicated line, Peterborough into Toronto, will be good news for them, but it raises serious questions and concerns about what that means for the existing line along the 401, which includes our Cornwall station. As you likely saw in the news, I was able to convince frankly via rail to do a presentation to Cornwall City Council a couple of weeks ago, and in my opinion, I share Mayor Claman's feedback that it left something to be desired. So I have been working with Mayor Claman, and I will be engaging county council more and all of our local municipalities on what this means for the Cornwall station. So to give you full disclosure, I filed it today, so it's public knowledge last week, but I've asked, it's called an order paper question, and we've asked via rail to give us the details of every dollar they've spent in capital repairs at the Cornwall station over the course of the last 10 years. We've asked for the details of the number of routes and stops, rather, at the Cornwall station, arrivals and departures over the course of the last 10 years, and the number of passengers that they've had there, arrivals and departures by month over that period of time. And the reason I show the picture there, for those of you that take the train, I love taking the train to Toronto for meetings and still do. If you look at our Cornwall station and you go along and look at every other single via station from Montreal to Toronto, no disrespect to the capital work there, but it's certainly underwhelming in terms of the capital investment or lack thereof in the station that's there. So we want to make sure that there's not declining route options, there's increased ones, and what exactly that looks like. And I think over the course of time, a big goal for ours is to get some more capital investment. When you go in the inside of the station, it certainly looks like you're going back in time respectfully in terms of the condition and the look of the station. And I think we need to keep on that issue, and we'll be asking county council for your support in the coming months on that. Most of your councils may have already seen this now, as well as county council, an issue that we're asking for support of local municipalities, mental health. Unfortunately, suicides, mental health interventions have only been exacerbated during the pandemic, and unfortunately, they were rising even before then. And so we need frankly, and I'll start with the bottom point first, we need more frontline supports for mental health, not more studies, not more action plans, but just tangible resources at our local hospitals and medical facilities. That's something I think there's universal support for, and there's been very good support for the 988 National Suicide Hotline, where a quick, easy-to-remember number. The CRTC is working on this now. It's kind of slow unfortunately, but we want to keep the pressure on and coordinate provincial resources to make sure if somebody's in crisis or in need, there is a quick, easy number that they can get to, that can get them the intervention help to address their mental health challenges and crisis. So each of your councils have received a motion of support. It would be wonderful to have your voices added to this. There are literally hundreds and hundreds across the country that have already supported, and the more that we show in every part of the country, the better off I think the plan stands. So this is probably the longest one, and there may be the most questions on it, affordable housing. This is a topic that I continue to hear quite a bit about. People wanting to move to the area is great, but people wanting to find something is even the bigger challenge. Well, as a county council, you've heard me, for those that serve with me, the buzzword of diversified forms of housing. We need more multi-res, we need more condo style, we need smaller units for those that are retiring, that are looking to downsize and perhaps have a turnkey operation. I don't need to tell you that supply and construction costs are the major issue right now. From a federal nature and a federal lens, here are some of the things that, you know, I've been advocating for and my colleagues in caucus have been advocating for. We actually have a motion to be debated possibly this week or next week on this issue. It is not as much of a pressing issue, I will say. It is an issue in terms of foreign buyers in our market here locally, but it's a ripple effect, certainly in larger urban centers. So we're looking at the idea of a temporary freeze of non-resident foreign buyers. That is really hurting the residential market right now. Another serious thing is money laundering of the Canadian real estate market being used for money laundering, both domestically and internationally. And then the other thing here that I want to address here today, just to give you a plug for, and I will be, this is something I'm personally pushing for very heavily, is tax incentives for purpose-built market rental housing. What do I mean by that? We do not have enough rental options available for our region, period, in both the city of Cornwall and SD and G. Here's the frank reality today, that a developer is more likely to build condos where they could sell them off, make their profit and be done with the building to a property manager quite quickly. There is a growing disincentive for people to be into the rental market, and we need to change that and make it more lucrative to get more rental housing built. That can be on a larger scale, for an example, the photo here of apartments, but it also could be granny suites and other things. The province is talking about developing a bunch of tools, and I'm hoping our local municipalities will use those. But here's just an example of an idea that I will throw out. Because it is, the return on investment is very tough for market-built rental housing. For example, if you sell a condo, you get the GST you pay in construction back with that sale right away. You can pass it on to the consumer. When you go to market rental housing, you have to absorb the GST or the HST, and you have to incorporate that as part of your return on investment over a longer period of time. One of the ideas I think we can look at doing is waiving a GST for purpose-built market rental housing. So in the country where you're building this, this could be hopefully a real incentive for people to reconsider this option. It can make their financing better, and it can make it more financially beneficial for a developer to look at this type of housing. So this certainly applies to SD and G. That's a federal lens and an idea that I think we can do from Ottawa to help with that issue. And lastly, just quickly on infrastructure funding. You see the Charlan Arena receive money as one of the projects recently. Part of my job is making sure we get our fair share back here, and I was working with Mayor Prevo in his role on South Glengarry to make sure those dollars came through at the federal level and make sure they were announced. But here's the problem, and I'll even look at South Dundas and the Morseburg Streetscape project there as well. The timelines are terrible for these programs. We see an announcement of a program, by the time the program's details are announced and applications are launched, by the time they get reviewed and approved, they're not coming at times that are properly aligning with your municipal budgets and with the times that should be, they should be going out to tender. And even speaking to Ben in the Morseburg Streetscape project, and again with South Glengarry, they've lost a whole year. South Glengarry, I believe, is not being able to go ahead with the project this year because they didn't get the okay soon enough to go out to tender, to get everything lined up for the infinite period of time that they have for the construction season at the arena. So simply because the timelines weren't matching properly, we're losing a construction season. And Morseburg, I know, has had some unique challenges with the tender, but I believe, in my opinion, from being a county council, part of the reason that the costs were increased in that tender in Morseburg was because of the time of the year and the timeframe in which it went out, is being a contributing factor to that. So I'm working on some of these things, what I call guarantees. If there's going to be infrastructure programs where municipalities are partnered on it, municipalities need to get the approvals, not in April, whenever, you know, construction season starts, but you need those approvals in October and November to budget accordingly for and to get them out to tender. So when construction season is here, boom, you're off and running, and you'll get competitive quotes and proper timelines. Last two quick things, as I encourage your local municipalities, as I will locally as well, the Enabling Accessibility Fund and the New Horizons for Seniors programs. Those are two very good programs for municipalities and not-for-profits to help with accessibility, to help with seniors programming, and we want to make sure that as many groups as possible and as many municipalities locally apply. You may not get funding every year, but there's certainly something where you can improve accessibility at some of your local buildings or community centers. So any help you need with those, just talk to Adrian, and we can get you the timelines and details for that. And with that, Mr. Warden, I will stop. I tried to keep it to 10 minutes, but any questions or comments from council, I'm happy to take them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duncan, for your presentation this morning. I will open it up to questions from members of county council. I will go to councillor McGillis first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just going to turn up my speaker just a bit here. There we go. Not to hear me, but to hear Eric. Eric, has there been any discussion with respect to capital gains exemption to get the economy stimulated again? It would be a great thing. That happened back in, when things were like in a recession last time, they exempted $2 million capital gains, because everyone's taking the risk of building, mostly to do with rental or housing. If they ever want to sell, they have to pay the capital gains, and there's no exemptions at all. And they take the risk, they cost, they're already paying taxes when they're building the buildings, you know, for GST and HST, and I know what you were talking about, you know, exempting part of that, which is great, but I think that the government should look strongly at exempting capital gains, maybe at $2 million, where it's just the little guy's trying to make a buck, and it's, and I'm hearing that, what's the point? We got to spend all the money, we're already paying taxes to build the buildings, or why do we have to give 50% or 40% back when we try to sell it? So it's paying taxes twice on the same structure. So I just wanted your thoughts on that.
Sure. Thanks councillor McGillis. So a couple of the, it hasn't been in the budgets in terms of what's going on there. I think when we look at the real estate market, if it's specifically even to that as a bit of an incentive, there's always the challenge of primary versus secondary residences in terms of taxations and the profits off it. May not always apply to capital gains, depending on the context of it. But I think from a tool in terms of incentivizing, it goes back to market-built rental housing and those types of things. I certainly think those are tools, even in terms of deferrals or being able to spread it over multiple years or doing certain things. I think capital gains is an extension of that, the GST being one. Overall, for small business, I think you'd certainly look at a number. I'm not sure what that number would be, but I can get you some more information if there's been any discussions. I haven't heard that as much. I think specifically the conversations for incentives have been around the housing aspects, but not secondary residences, but more for, again, market rentals and even diversified forms of housing. So more dense housing, even some condos where they're not served and they're in underserved areas as well. So I can take that offline and get a bit more information from some of my colleagues that are on the finance committee, but certainly could be something to take a look at for sure. We're going to need some stimulus measures and tools to shake some dollars up as we get it back open up. One of the things I can just mention on there as a kind of an idea, one of the things I've been working on with several businesses that were impacted is RRSPs and RIFs that have been a challenge. There's been two or three local business owners that when the pandemic hit and things kind of hit the fan, they weren't sure what the situation was going to be like. They withdrew their RRSPs and they got nailed with a big tax bill on that. It was simply to float their business for a couple of months until the business support programs came in. They're now able to repay those back, and they want to repay them back without penalty, and that's not been an option. So in terms of, you know, that's more of a short-term pandemic thing, we're still working on with several businesses to try to see if the government will allow a repayment of that, because a lot of people did cash in suddenly when they needed to for the one or two months there last year, when it looked really iffy of what was going on, of doing that as well. So that's just another example of an issue we're trying to work through.
Right. Councillor McGillis.
Yeah, well, thanks for that, Eric. I think it's a great thing to try and find ways of stimulating the comedy after this pandemic, especially after, you know, so many businesses are hurting. Contractors are having a hard time because of the cost of lumber and the cost of materials, and not only the cost, but trying to get the supply to the different places like EMarts and places where they sell it, the supplier. It's asinine to try and get anything done. As I say, I know it's federal, this might be more provincial, but is there any way of trying to curb some of this cost to to the consumer?
Yeah, so one thing, actually CEO Simpson would know this, my affection for TVO, The Agenda, with Steve Payton, there was a really good episode a couple of weeks ago on the price of lumber and what's happening there specifically. It's about a 25-minute episode. It was really, really good and informative for there. And to give you an idea, I was talking to a contractor who was building a home in Morseburg, and last year for a similar home with the roof trusses and the lumber alone was $37,000. This year, they're looking at $100,000 or more. So that's a lot of money whenever you're looking at, you know, that when the price of lumber will go back down, for that person to get their money back through real estate, it's crippling in two ways. One, they're never going to get it back, or that cost is going to be passed on to a young family looking to get into the market or to sell it. So I think there's a few things when it comes to lumber. We need to have a better, I think, a better handle. And the industry even admits, and the TVO program there talks about it, of not building up their capacity. They thought capacity would decline with COVID going on, and they changed their numbers, and they didn't have the ability to ramp back up again when they saw the demand going, and they haven't been able to in different parts of the province with COVID restrictions. And even HR and hiring, they've had a real tough time with doing some of those things. So in terms of the price of lumber being the single biggest thing right now, I think we're seeing inflation of construction costs, lumber being astronomically even higher, but the debt and the dollars that we're printing frankly with their federal budget, it's leading to inflation, and it's only exacerbating an already bad real estate market on this. So I go back to some of the things when we look at real estate and look, well, and to your point, the cost of doing business, but real estate, we need to take a look at some of these big tools of the money laundering, foreign buyers coming in for investment on properties. Our real estate market and our residential market should not be, for an individual and a homeowner, that's one thing to add to build equity in your home and build a retirement, but from people from other countries to come into the market to profit off of this is not helpful either. So I would encourage that TVO episode, which was really good, and they had some good ideas there about how they can control and try to get the price back down in the short to medium term.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Councillor Williams, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks, Eric, for your presentation and taking the time today. It's much appreciated. Just a question with regards to, or question, comment, I guess, with regards to incentivizing a building, specifically rental. You know, through the Community Improvement Plan, which I realize is in the provincial domain through the Planning Act, you know, we do, there is an option there to defer taxes, that is, increase taxes by, you know, through, when you're improving a building. I'm just wondering if any, maybe anyone on the call actually can, might know about this. Is there any way to actually do that type of incentive with regards to an infill, a new build versus just an improvement? Just as a tool for us municipalities?
Yeah, no, I think that, so I still follow with interest a lot of the municipal work and even what the city of Cornwall right now is actually doing that with some of their community improvement plans and targeting certain sites on that. So I think, yeah, the provincial tools through that. The one thing I'll give credit to is Steve Clark, who you all know as the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. But one of the other ones is the Associate Minister for Red Tape, Minister Prabibes' first name, from the GTA, has been really good. I've been sending off different ideas, even though it's not my direct bailiwick, but sending off some different ideas when it comes to that. But if there's different things you can do to improve your CIPs to get investments on that, again, I encourage council, and I'll give credit to senior staff at the counties. You guys are getting more into the game of offering solutions and resolutions off to the province and that. That's something you can certainly do. But I think federally, taking the GST off is something that can seriously change the game for rental housing. And again, it just goes back where you don't, I hate to say you blame them, but if I'm a businessperson looking and you can build condos, get your return on investment back and the condo market doing very well, make your money, people aren't interested to get into the rental side of things because of just the return on investment and the challenges that come with it. So I think there's certainly some game changers at a federal level we could look at. So always happy to chat, and I owe you and Jamie and then Frances to do a lunch in Alexandria someday. We've been talking about it. When we open up, it'll be a patio at some point soon, but we'll talk further on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Not seeing none. Thanks very much, MP, Mr. Duncan, for coming out this morning and providing us the information that you gave us, and we wish you all the best and enjoy the rest of your week.
Thank you. You guys as well, take care all. Now, it couldn't have been perfect, Tommy, if I got 30 seconds before my next 9:30 Zooms. That's good. Good to see you all. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you. You too. Okay, we'll move right into action requests, transportation, streetlights, patio fees for 2021. Action request?
It's moved by councillor Gardner, seconded by councillor Fraser, that the council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry support waiving the county application fee for street-side patios through 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Dahan, and good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Just very briefly, we looked at this last year and council was supportive of it, and we're recommending the same this year, that we waive fees for street-side patios. I'm actually, I have an application in front of me that post our meeting today, we'll be processing and hopefully approving, but we see this as a great way to, you know, support some of our local businesses and help them start back up again. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I do agree with you. I will go to councillor Fraser, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, Ben. In the requirements on the two, three, I'm sorry, number three, street-side patio requirements, number two, the fees will be waived where the street-side patio is being funded through a Community Improvement Plan program. What happens if someone doesn't, they apply to have their What happens if someone doesn't, they apply to have their fees waived? And I, and I, it's a silly question because I can see what it says. The fees won't be waived if it doesn't, if it's not part of a community improvement plan program. And my concern is maybe the CIP program, for instance, in North Dundas has run out of money and it's not approved because there's a lack of money. And then therefore, I'm guessing what number two says is that the fees will be charged to the to the business person. Is that correct?
So under normal circumstances, or normal being outside of the pandemic time, yeah. So if it was not part of a community improvement plan, there is an application fee. And unless they were getting that project done and approved through a community improvement plan. But what this action request is seeking authorization for is through 2021. It doesn't matter whether it's a CIP program or not. We are not charging any fees for the street side patio applications this year.
Mr. Warden, through you, thank you, Ben, for for clearing that up. And but I I think I'd like to revisit that post pandemic.
Thank you. Sure. And sorry, excuse me, Mr. Warren, if I may. We have a similar, if that's, I guess, contextually something we want to look at as as council, happy to bring it back. We have the same thing in our, when we talk about our signed by law, the same thing is, I believe, there as well. Or so there's a couple of other instances and some of the applications we process where we can, where we do have that similar type of waiving of a fee because it is getting approved through a community improvement plan project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing none. You heard the motion. All in favor of the motion. The motion is carried. Thank you. And we'll move to number two, portable at Somers Town Forest. Action request?
It's moved by Council Williams, seconded by Council Laundry, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry support the installation of a permanent structure, portable, at the Somers Town Forest and assume its technical ownership.
Thank you, Mr. Dhan.
Thank you. So a good news story, you know, we have enjoyed and have a fruitful relationship with the Friends of the Somers Town Forest Trails. And they have, one of the things, as council may recall, over the past couple of years, we've been working on that parking lot that fronts County Road 27. We did the original install, put up some lights. Over the past couple of years, it's been extremely, extremely busy there. And I can attest, I'm a regular user and some of the the days I was out there this past winter, I counted at least fifteen to twenty vehicles parked on the county roadway. So, you know, with with council support, we've actually finished the expansion of that parking lot. And one of the ultimate goals that we've been looking for there is working with the Friends is to install a permanent structure there in some form or another. So right now, what what happens is that the Friends of the Somers Town Trails, they rent a construction trailer, comes in and out every year, and they have to connect it to hydro. And that's how they operate their rental activities and some of their forest management stuff on our, you know, working with them, which works great. But of course, that comes at a cost every year. And and so we've been looking kind of on a long term way to, you know, keep a little bit more money in their pocket and help deliver some of the things that they do out there. Because one of the, one of the great advantages of this relationship is the only cost that users incur out in the forest is if they need to rent anything or participate in a, in a, in a lesson. You don't have to be, you don't have to give any money to the Friends to use that beautiful facility. And they're, they're looking after all the trails and the grooming and all these things. So for us, we see this as a great way to continue working with, in a, in a great relationship with the Friends. They have secured a portable from a local school and would like to move it on to the site. We have talked in the past between ourselves, like what we, what we would do. And one of the things we felt from a county perspective would be the the most appropriate approach is to assume its technical ownership. So we do have an ownership stake in it, and this is just insurance and permits and things like that, just to make it easier and more straightforward. But at the same time, work through a, an agreement with the Friends and have a good, solid agreement in place. And to that end, if council's supportive of this resolution, I'd be happy to entertain some, if if there's some ideas or thoughts that they want to see in that agreement. So that's where we are today. The Friends are ready to accept the, or have have purchased the portable. And the question is, are we prepared to assume its technical ownership and and move forward in that manner? Or does council see another, another way forward? So with that, I'll open up to questions.
Thank you. I believe it's a great new story and hopefully the county council supports it because I know so Glengarry would certainly support it. Just a question, Ben, do you know exactly where they want to put the portable? I know depending on the wetlands and so on, but is it in the same area kind of where the other building is now?
Yeah, yeah, that's that's ideally where we would end up. And, you know, that's subject to change once we kind of get the dimensions and take a look at things. But that's my envisioning is is around where that, the, where it was before. And that's where our panel is for the electrical service to the, to the building or to the area.
Just concerned in regards to losing any more parking spaces. Yeah, no, that's good to hear. I'll open it up to comments or questions. Counselor Jaworski?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. Just a, just a comment, you know, in support of what the Somers Town Friends are doing here. I mean, it's, as has been mentioned, it's in South Glengarry and it's a very well utilized site, recreational site. I mean, and I'd be remiss not to say that they had fifteen thousand visitors in the first, first three months of this year, and they're averaging five hundred a week right now. So definitely this would be a piece of infrastructure that would be used, be used greatly, and it would help, help them promote the activities of the Somers Town Trails.
Thank you, Counsel Jaworski. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing none. You heard the motion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. So we'll move into tenders and quotations, culvert lining?
It's moved by Council Smith, seconded by Council Laundry, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry accept the tender from Aqua Drain Services Incorporated for culvert lining for a hundred and sixty four thousand and eighty nine dollars plus HST and authorize the Director of Transportation Services to sign all necessary documents to give effect to the contract.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dhan.
Thank you. Very straightforward. This is something we award several times in most given years. It's the lining of existing culverts that have started to fail, but yet we can still actually put a liner through it and cure it. So it's very, very cost effective compared to ripping up a roadway and replacing the pipe. And, you know, we, we see the great, a great benefit of approaching the work in this kind of way and look forward to council's support of this tender.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Not seeing none. All in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. And B is the Winchester CP overpass. Action request?
It's moved by Council Fraser, seconded by Council Gardner, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry accept the tender from Dalcon Constructors Limited for the rehabilitation of the Winchester CP overpass at their unit prices totaling nine hundred and seventy three thousand dollars plus HST, and that the Director of Transportation Services be authorized to sign all documents to give effect to the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Dhan.
Thank you. A good news story. We closed the tender for the Winchester CP project. Had a very, very competitive bid with lots of contractors looking at the, looking at it. It's coming in under budget, so we're quite happy to see that. And, you know, the contractor provided council approves that they're ready to start, which is, they'll, they'll be out on site tomorrow. They're, they've got a crew ready to go, and that's why they were looking aggressively at this project. And they're, we, we have them on the McPhee Bridge job right now. So we've worked with Dalcon before and we're quite satisfied with the, the work they do.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Counsel Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And Ben, I, I, the more we talk about the Winchester CP overpass, the more I pay attention to it, crossing it, and it's so good to hear that everything's going to start rolling. It, every time I look at it, I think it's gotten worse. And with the, the falling, the falling concrete and the, the parjing missing and the rebar exposed, it's, it's, it puts great concern on lots of us. So the signs that are out and about for the detours, that's in preparation then, Ben? Is that, is that correct?
So, so there is no detour. We are, it's going to be lane closures, so single lane closures. We do, we are talking kind of internally how we want to manage over dimensional stuff. So it should be able to, I think, with three point six meter wide can still get through, but there might be a challenge for some of the agricultural community. So we're talking internally about how we want to communicate out to the agricultural community because anything that's over three point five meters wide, we're approving as a special permit anyway. And we're going to have them go around, use County Road thirty eight and County Road three to miss that whole, that whole piece of County Road thirty one. So we have a really good detour, but it's more the ag stuff that isn't captured under our permits. So we've got to make sure we get some good communication out on.
And if I may, Mr. Warden, to that rerouting around three and thirty eight, Ben, we have our delineators up in North Dundas now on three, and just for your, for your, just for your knowledge.
Sorry, I'm talking about the three that's like Inkerman, not the Main Street.
Thank you. Yes, okay. Well, our Main Street, that section. Okay, that's good to know. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel Byfus?
Thank you, Warden. Ben, as Counsel Fraser says, good project get done and it's starting to deteriorate significantly. Any comments on the the bid prices, like you're, you're going for less than a million to over almost two? Like, that's a big, big spread. So I know we've worked with Dalcon before, but is there any glaring reason why there is such a disparity?
We looked through the tenders. We were satisfied with the prices we got. And we know just based on what we're hearing and what we've seen from other bids, like there's some, there's some, there's a, there's a lack of ministry work, which then cascades down through the industry itself. So we're seeing some pretty hungry, hungry contractors out there, quite honestly. So, yeah, I'm not surprised to see that disparity and some pretty aggressive bidding happening here. I mean, when you, actually, when you average it out, it's right on one point four million, which was what our budget was. So it kind of tells you that, yeah, we're seeing some disparity within the, within that industry. But again, when we looked at the bid prices, we were, we didn't see anything that was glaringly out to lunch with, with what we received.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counsel McGillis?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warden. And that could work the other way too, Ben, because I know a lot of contractors, I mean, we talked about this when you have a variation of different bids that are, you know, the one that was double almost, actually it was. And a lot of times you see a company, they'll throw in a bidding, they're really busy, just to see if they get the job. They'll throw it in high, and if they get it, fine. If they don't, then, so a lot of them have lots of extra work. They just throw it in and sometimes they even sub it. So that's what happens. Right now, I think you're more closer to the facts of what's going on here.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing none. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. And number C is the St. Andrews West, excuse me, urban reconstruction action request?
It's moved by Council McGillis, seconded by Council Smith, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry waive the requirements of policy one dash twelve and that the Director of Transportation Services be authorized to procure goods and services necessary for the reconstruction of SDG eighteen, St. Andrews West via competitive quotation.
Thank you, Mr. Dhan.
Thank you. So this one, I just, I guess, we want to make sure it's very crystal clear with council how we're approaching this project and what, what we're looking for here. We're going to be doing this work in house, so it'll be our St. Andrews shop crew that will be managing and doing the reconstruction work. And of course, we don't have pavers, we don't have dump trucks, we don't have, you know, we don't make pipes ourselves. So one, what we're looking for with, with council support is being able to authorize the procurement of some of these goods and services via competitive quotation rather than tender. And by and large, I guess, backing up to the purchasing policy itself, anything over fifty thousand dollars, according to our purchasing policy, requires a tender, a formal tender, which often requires things like bid deposits and, you know, it's, it's out on, online and you have to close it at a certain time and, and you need council approval. Right now, we're working, the, the work that our staff are working on for tenders is actually for the July meeting. Like, we're already, we're usually working a meeting and a half to two meetings ahead. So the reality of trying to, to manage some aspects of this work where we think it might be over fifty thousand dollars and coordinate it with council meetings can be a little bit of a challenge, particularly, and the one I'll point out where we expect will probably be the only one that's over fifty thousand dollars is the procurement of some of the pipes that we're using for the infilling of the ditches. So we've, you know, we've got three, four different suppliers that we can send, this is our quantities to, and they would be responding back via competitive quotation, and then we'd be able to award it with council's support of, of the resolution as it stands. Couple other things that I do want to point out is that cell Stormont's surfacing treatment program, we're looking to work with them to be able to get the pulverizing done on County Road eighteen. And that's something that we're hoping would happen whenever cell Stormont's work is taking place. So that would be through working in collaboration and through change order with cell Stormont. The other thing too is the resurfacing itself, so putting the asphalt down, that would be done through tender because we can bundle that with the County Road eight eighteen tender that we're working on right now, as well as maybe the shop, the shop skin patching tender that we're working on. So we've got a big asphalt tender that we're putting together and we feel this would fit very well with it. It's just some of those items, like the purchasing of, of, of goods and services where we're concerned it might be over fifty thousand dollars. So we just want to make sure we cover, cover ourselves and have council support on, on how we've competitively procured it because it doesn't quite align with our purchasing policy.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Counsel Laundry, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Ben, I know we've had some discussion on this and I just want to get a little bit of clarity when I'm reading this as far as how the background is, is labeled. So when we're dealing, we have had some discussion as far as myself personally in the town of Chrysler, I have concerns with new development sidewalks being built to protect the, and the concerns that I have as far as moving forward. There's the understanding as far as urban area of the town, which falls under the responsibility of the township and where it lies. So in here, where when I read it, it talks about the urban area and it says about reconstruction of sidewalks, ditch filling, which is part of what we're looking at doing or needing to do in, in some of our hamlets. So where, or could you maybe explain what it is that you're doing and where the responsibility falls as far as municipal or at the upper tier at the counties?
Yeah, great question. So the, the storm infrastructure on the roadway itself, so taking the water from the roadway, that's a county responsibility. The sidewalk work is being, is for the municipality. And this is a long stretch of roadway. This is about a kilometer stretch of roadway. So we're actually doing the design, we're working with cell Stormont and we're, we're doing the design in house. And but cell Stormont's paying for piping that's required to, because the sidewalk might be extended out. But, and we've got a couple of areas and council may remember during budget, we had talked about trying to do as much ditch filling as we could. So in areas where we're doing that ditch filling to support the drainage coming off the roadway, that's going to be our responsibility. But there are certain instances where cell Stormont, like, because we have to do some ditch filling to help support the sidewalk, where it's going to be their responsibility. So we're doing our best to make sure we, we're kind of following that, you know, similar to how we've talked about that in the past, we're trying to follow the, the line in terms of if it's sidewalk and pedestrian related, it is a local responsibility, whereas if it's drainage related to the roadway and draining the road, that's a county, county responsibility. So I don't know, I hope that answers your question or?
Counsel Laundry?
Just supplement. So thank you very much for that answer, just for your information. I will probably be talking to you in the near future, potentially next year. But as far as engineering or any of that stuff, I'm not sure where that lies. But I will, we will be looking at your expertise. But at the end of the, the end result is to, you know, protect the interest. You've got, you know, seventy five new houses that went up, potentially another quite a big amount. And we need to look at getting some kind of infrastructure as far as sidewalk goes because all services are on the south side of the bridge. So we got to maybe, anyway, just a heads up that I will be contacting you and moving forward on some of these questions that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McGillis.
Very pleased to see this project coming to the start, July, the mid-July, I think you're looking at, right?
Yeah, I think I would say we're actually going to start sooner than that with the ditching and the piping and some of those things that we can do off road. But once we, you know, July is when we're going to start to get into the inroad pulverizing and grading and fine grading and all that good stuff. So it'll, it'll be starting sooner rather than later with, within the next couple of weeks, as we'll be, staff will be mobilizing out there to get some work done.
Just a question, subsequent question, Mr. Warden. With some timelines, what are we looking at for the completion of this project?
I will, you know what, I'd have to report back to council just to, just to make sure. I want to say, you know, mid-August, but I'm, let me, let me double check that with, with the schedule our staff have put together.
Sure, the residents will be asking us that question. That's why I just wanted to know.
Yeah, and, and actually to that end, you know what we'll do is we'll try and get, we'll, we'll do a flyer for the residents. Yeah. And, and actually to that end, you know, what we'll do is we'll try and get, we'll, we'll do a flyer for the residents. We'll get our staff to put a flyer out with, with that clarity and I'll, I'll make sure you and Counselor Smith and the municipality have a copy of that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Smith.
Thank you. Counsel McGillis has answered or asked my question, so I don't need to go there. But I was just wondering, well, residents, we're going to be. I think we're going to be working on or around their driveways. Will they still be able to get in and out somewhere or will there be alternate parking for them?
Yeah, usually when we're doing that kind of work, we do, we might identify, you know, between nine and three, you won't be able to have access to your driveway. If you need to come in and out, here's a spot, we can have you. But they're pretty good to make sure people have access at the end of the day. I, you know, sometimes it's a case by case scenario, but certainly that's something we do our utmost to communicate with the residents to make sure they're aware of how they're impacted.
Thank you. So just subsequent question, if I may. So that be the townships or the county's responsibility to inform the residents of this and give them the dates that they're going to be not able to get into their driveway?
That'll be us. We're, we're the lead on this project. So that's, that's ultimately our responsibility to do.
All right, good. Thank you very much for that.
Okay, Counsel Byfels.
Thank you, Warden. Ben, I don't have a, a, a real issue with the counties doing in-house work. It's, it's a good initiative. Perhaps maybe you can come back county council in the end and report how it all goes and, and how it costs out when counties do the work. Instead of just contracting it out and having a contractor doing it gives us a good base. One of the challenges I see and maybe you can address it is that county staff tend to be very regimented in their timelines on day start, lunchtimes and day end, which don't tend to be very friendly when it comes to private contractors who like to work sun up, the sundown. How are you going to make that efficiency work with, within the scope of that project? And if it works there, then going forward. Thank you.
I can, I, you know, I can briefly answer that just based on, we did the replacement of, the name escapes me right now. On County Road thirteen, it was a big box culvert and we did that in-house this spring. I'd be happy to break, like, that's a perfect example of a straightforward job that we have numbers on from private contractors. And I can tell you that our staff, you know, yeah, I know what you're saying with respect to, we've got hours of work and all that. But our staff were, you know, they, they stayed the Monday night, they needed to get the, they needed to get the project, you know, the culvert removed because the crane was coming, you know, we're doing the base on Tuesday. They, they worked twelve, fourteen hour days. So our, our staff aren't afraid to work the day if it makes sense to, to get certain aspects and milestones done. And I have confidence that that would be the case in St. Andrews. So I respect what you're saying, but I also can, can attest to the fact that our staff aren't afraid to put in a big days of work to, to get stuff done if it makes sense from a efficiency point of view.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counsel Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And Ben, to tag along with Counsel Landry on needing more information and a better understanding of how these projects are going to move forward as we come through our villages and hamlets in the future, just not, not to put the fear of anyone into you. I, I, post pandemic, we do need to get together and discuss things, County Road thirty eight. And just so I have a better handling and a better understanding and Mr. Warden, I just take this opportunity to speak to it because I don't want to forget about that. And Ben won't let me forget that we need to get together in the future to go over that. And thank you for that, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing none. You heard the motion, all in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. So number D was deferred until our next county council meeting. So E is the Morsburg Roundabout and streetscaping action request.
It's moved by Counsel Smith, seconded by Counsel Laundrie, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry accept the tender from Cocoa Paving Incorporated at their bid price totaling four million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents plus HST. And that the Director of Transportation Services be authorized to sign all necessary documents to give effect to the contract. And that the Director of Transportation Services and the Manager of Infrastructure be directed to begin discussions with Cocoa Paving to realize additional cost savings within this contract.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Don.
Thank you. So I mean, without a doubt, this is the biggest project that we had planned to deliver this year. And so we've, the bids have closed. Again, the background, just for, for those, just to remind everybody, we had tendered this project in the winter time. Costs came back well over budget, six point one million dollars plus for the low bid. Cocoa was the low bid at that time as well. We obviously didn't feel comfortable and feel that the value was there toward that project. So we went back to, not the drawing board, but we went back to the, into the project and identified a bunch of cost-saving measures that we felt would get this project back down to something that, you know, hopefully was with intended to be within budget, but certainly more palatable and represent good, good value to the taxpayers, not only in SD and G, but there's a significant federal and provincial grant that goes along with this project. So taxpayers in general. We, for the redesign, we removed a bunch of pedestrian elements and/or rationalized them, working with South Dundas. We simplified the road cross-section measurably outside of the roundabout itself. We converted as much as possible the storm sewer into an open ditch. And we identified some landscaping elements that could be reduced or rationalized again to try and, and save some money. So we're recommending awards to Cocoa. Cocoa was the only bidder and, you know, opposite to what we see in the bridge industry, the heavy civil industry, from what we're hearing is a very, very busy right now. That being said, and I guess I do want to remind council on this, whenever contractors are submitting bids, they don't know that they're submitting the bid by themselves. They're submitting a competitive bid based on the fact that they're expecting competition. So when we looked through the bids we, or the bid we received from Cocoa and looking, you know, kind of line by line and comparing to what we saw in the previous bid, you know, we saw very competitive pricing through the, through the contract. General comments to, to note, I mean, there is a significant amount of electrical work that takes place in this project for the illumination and some of the other elements of the project. So, and we know just in the, in that, that industry right now, the electrical industry, the price of wire, copper, breakers, all those things are extremely high. And it's reflected in the prices we got. And yeah, it is a, you know, things like lumber, things, there's all sorts of things in the, in the construction industry that are driving up prices of, of things. Plastic is one that we had identified as well, where plastics are going up in price. When we look at the costing itself, just based on the project costs, and this is, we're looking from the counties, the counties part of this project and the county is eighty-four percent of the overall project in terms of price. Our, we're, we are projecting a shortfall or a budget shortfall, four hundred and forty thousand dollars for the work. And that includes some contingencies that are likely not, not going to be incurred. But also some project, like there's all sorts of project contingencies that, that we've accounted for in that shortfall. So trying to give council the best overall, and when I say best, like a reasonable overall picture for what this project's going to look like for us. So things like, and I do want to highlight some of those provisional items that, that, that I'm talking about. We had temporary asphalt and that was intended to, if we had a circumstance where we're in gravel for a significant amount of time, we could put some asphalt down to help with the impact of construction. That's something that, you know, quite frankly, if, if you have a lot of budgetary room, you can look at and consider for the community. But in this circumstance, you know, not that we don't want to consider it, but we can mitigate some of those impacts other ways with more water and dust suppression. Managing contaminated soils, at this point, we don't have a, we don't have evidence that there is contaminated soils. But sometimes when you're digging in some of these historic areas, you never know what you're going to come up against. So we have a price for it, but it isn't, it isn't something that may necessarily happen to us. Imported upgrade, if, if we had a challenge with some poor material coming out of the site, again, we don't have evidence that it's going to be poor material, but you never know if you run into pockets of, of stuff that you need to get rid of. You know, portable lighting sweepers, there's a whole bunch of things in here that knowing we are up against a very tight budget, that we can be very judicious with how we, how we manage the work. The other thing too, that I do want to point out is I, you know, we're, we're looking at a shortfall of four hundred and forty thousand dollars. But there are, after we've gone through the pricing, we feel that there's some opportunities as well for some other savings. And, and one being, I'll, I'll, I'll name it right off the, the top is when we saw the price for the asphalt recycling for part of the roadway. You know, the price is significantly higher than we would have budgeted. And we feel that there may be an opportunity, for example, instead of doing a recycling is to look at a pulverizing and then actually thickening up the asphalt. That might be a cheaper option for us than trying to do recycling. Other things we may look at is there's some direct, direct drilling for some of the utility ducts. Perhaps it is cheaper to actually dig them in and put them in conventionally with conventional trenches than directional drilling. So we'd like to have those discussions with the contractor and look at some additional price savings. And, you know, with council support of this resolution, we would, that'd be the first thing we'd like to do. And I'm confident, just based on the contractor, that was the low bid, knowing that they are willing to work with us because they're, you know, this is their home too. And, and they have a great interest in this project and delivering a good project for us. And so we want, you know, we feel that there's a real opportunity to work with them. The other thing I do want to mention is South Dundas itself, now their, their element of the project is over budget as well. They've got some options and they have to have this kind of discussion around their council table as well, whether they want to, you know, proceed, whether they want to do similar to us. There is some provisional items in their price that they can remove out and then there is some non-provisional items that they can look at deleting. So maybe the sidewalk doesn't go this far here, or maybe we have to get rid of a crossing here and, and install it later on. So, you know, they, they, they have this kind of discussion they need to have around their council table. From the county's perspective, because we are by and large the, the bulk of this work, we, I think, you know, my recommendation to council is to make the decision and, and then work with South Dundas wherever they land on how they want to proceed. And in terms of the shortfall itself, we do, yes, again, we had estimated four hundred and forty thousand dollars in shortfall. But I do want to remind council, we do have a seven hundred and ninety thousand dollar surplus in hot mix. So in terms of our financial capacity to deliver the work, even though it is over budget, I certainly, you know, we certainly do have that capacity to do that this year. And, and we looked at, or we had recommended that we do this work this year for the, for the reason we're in a pandemic. Traffic's down, the impact to tourism and that, that part of the economy would be lessened this year. So, you know, from where we're sitting, we feel that this is a good project to move forward with. But ultimately, it's, you know, it's council's decision on where they want to go with it.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to questions or comments. Counsel Byfels.
Thank you, Warden. Thanks, Ben, for your report so far. You know, it's been a challenge, just, you know, coming back over budget and, and know it's one of those things that's been on my, has been on my mind all weekend. Except for maybe yesterday, I let her go and said, I need just rest on it. But I certainly see some places that we can certainly work with Cocoa on this, on this tender. And, and they seem to be fairly willing to, to work with the counties and South Dundas in this regard. And, and sometimes as much as tenders go out and they come from consultants, those on the ground will come up with good ideas that still work and still work within the project and save us dollars. And I think as long as we're open to that and we have a good cooperative meeting with Cocoa between you, yourself, with Mike, who's done a significant amount of work on this project, and I will give him credit for that. And those of us at South Dundas, including myself and Deputy Mayor, that we come out with some solutions that save us some money. And whether it's the county saving the money or South Dundas saving the money, I think we should still go ahead with the project. We're close enough that I feel that we'll probably save half that money and, and still make a decent project of it. There's nowhere else to cut on this project that makes logical sense. And from South Dundas's point of view, we will be having a special council meeting tonight and I'm not going to pre-determine that's the outcome of that meeting. But we will go through our share of the, the project and see if how we're going to deal with the shortfall that that is impacting our budget line. And the challenge at South Dundas is we don't have the pot of money as, as great as the county's. We've had a lot of structural work that has come up in the last year and a half that most municipalities would be buried with. So we're struggling with that, but I think this pop, this, this project's been on the books far too long to ignore at this time. I feel strongly that Cocoa can do a decent enough job. When it comes to the county budget and how we're going to deal with it. One thing I do have a challenge with is that when we did our budgeting this past winter, spring, and we determined as a council that we were going to put the surpluses from any jobs from this year and put them away for roads we've ignored forever. We'd be stealing from that, we'd be defeating that policy like pretty fast, pretty hard right away. And I have a challenge with that. I think, you know, I think we have to find money. I, I agree with that. Perhaps a better way of looking at it is that we either borrow it from our working reserve or borrow it from our capital reserve that, the, the the road reserve that we have now and look at how it would fit into our budget next year. And that's something probably we will, South Dundas too, where we borrow the money now and budget for it next year and to make up the shortfall. I know we do have the extra money there and granted, that's easy way of getting money and I don't disagree with it. However, we, we're trying to save those dollars for those roads that we've ignored forever. And I don't even want to make that name the list because we all know the list. So it's a balancing act. I understand that, but I certainly recommend to council that we go ahead with the project. I agree to Ben's recommendation and come up with a plan with Cocoa to still have a good project that still works. And anywhere that they feel that they can save us a dollar, whether us at South Dundas or us at SDG, then we certainly keep our mind open to it. We have to recognize that a lot of dollars are coming from the federal and the provincial government. So in the end, trying to find money that someone else helps pay for is certainly a good investment in long term. So with that, that's my thoughts right now and I'll, I'll leave it to, to you and the rest of the council to see where we go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Gardner, then Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Warden Prakel. And thank you, Ben. I know this has been the project that just keeps on going. And I appreciate the level of communication that we'll have to continue to find those cost savings. And I agree with Counselor Byvelds. I think it's gone on way too long and it's time, it's time to make it happen. I just have a question. This is going to be the third roundabout that is in the county system. And I'm just wondering if, Ben, you have thought of coming up with some sort of consistency agreement or something for maintenance around, around those roundabouts? Because if you look at the Iroquois Roundabout compared to the South Stormont Roundabouts, the difference is night and day in the visual aspect of maintenance and, and the gardening and the, you know, the chips and, and that type of thing. And I'm, I'm just wondering, as we go into it, you've, you're going to have a sizable collection of roundabouts. And I'm just, I'm looking for some consistency with how they're maintained and who, who does the maintenance.
Fair enough. We, we had at the, during the previous council, we did have a good discussion about maintenance and responsibility of that. But you know what, I have no objection if we want to create some kind of clear, some clear direction for us and local municipalities in terms of who does what. I'm totally for that because I, yeah, I agree with you. Like there's, it's not easy and, and yeah.
Yeah. Follow up, if I may, Warden. Yeah, it's, it's, it's the visualization of what folks see. So, you know, you drive by Long Sioux right now, it's absolutely gorgeous. Our Iroquois residents have, have just felt neglected in the sense of, of how it appears, whether it's laying of the woodchips, who does what? And I just, I, I, I think we're at a point where there needs to be fairness and consistency. And as you know, I was in at the last round of council. But for this round of council, if it's a county project and it's, it's a Council, but for this round of council, if it's a county project and it's it's a something that the counties are proud to have. I really think that we need to dial in on that consistency because for South Dundas. We are now going to be putting a second roundabout and our residents are consistently asking us, is it going to look like the mess in in the center of the Iroquois Roundabout? So you're taking a project that I know you have great pride in implementing and 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 changing the way that we deliver as opposed to stoplights and having those roundabouts. But for some of our residents, it is leaving a little bit of a sour bitter taste in their mouths, just because they're they're looking at it visually. They're not seeing this consistent. Maintenance. So I'd really, really appreciate if we could dial down on that and and have that message. So if it's county roundabout, it it's maintained the same way and at the same level.
Okay, thank you. And Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just like to say that I support Counselor Byveld's proposal that any surpluses go into the roads in need. And that the the shortfall is found elsewhere. The and and Ben, just to purely out of curiosity. The the previous tender that Coco was the lowest on. What did what was that? What's the difference between the previous tender and this one?
That's sort of price wise?
Yes.
Uh, so that was six point one million. So we shaved over a million off of this project.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Byfels.
Thank you, Warden. I would like the the Director of Finance to to give us her thoughts on on the shortfall and where she thinks she can. Where we should get the money from. Please.
Thank you. Mrs. Russell.
Okay, just a quick, can everybody hear me? Okay, I have a new setup. We're good. Um, so I was just messaging Ben, actually. So we do have a very, very healthy working reserve. Although the auditors will be presenting on the twenty first. We have approximately six point three million in our working reserve at the end of twenty twenty. But we also have a roads resurfacing reserve that is intended to be used for cost fluctuations of paving activities. There's one point eight million in there as well. It's council's discretion whether to use, you know, what reserve and there is flexibility there. But to Counselor Byveld's point, if we wait and see at year end how our overall surplus for roads lands by taking from there, it does take away from our new policy. Of adding any surplus to those now roads. So there are two reserves that we could be using that would fit the the criteria.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Byfels.
Uh, thanks Rebecca for that. I think, you know, I guess my suggestion would be, you know, it's all going to come out of a pot. There's no doubt about it. And I and as I said, I do believe we'll find some savings and the pot won't be as dug into perhaps. Between you and Ben, you look at your various reserves and and come up with. Maybe further direction to council, you know. I don't know where the working reserve is compared to our usual ten percent. And I think it seemed probably about the right place. If there's a place in the capital or in the road resurfacing budget that that between you and Ben that feel that's a place to rob it from and. And then so, you know, then I guess that would be something that council at the end has to decide. There's no doubt about it. It's. It's either taken out of one or the other, but it's Counselor Williams and I both agree if we take it out of that. We instituted a new policy and if we try to take it out of that right away, it seems like we defeated the purpose of having that policy there and. And and those now those now need roads are are not disappearing and and we're all driving them and. It's the only way we'll ever get there. And perhaps with our our generously helpfully reserves, one way or the other, we'll find the dollars to do it. And in the end. If if you feel that we need to budget. Money next year to pay them back, then that's a good option. We tend to do that once in a while. This is more, this is a project where you're spending ahead of time and and then paying it back. It's no different than borrowing money and loaning it. Paying a bit of interest on it or. Or saving the dollars and then doing the project just a little reverse. I do like saving dollars doing the project, but sometimes. Projects happening and you got to go and do the project and and find the dollars after whether to come out of reserves or or lending it or anything to go for the money, but it's just boring out of our own pocket to pay it down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing none. You've heard the motion. Whoops, sorry. Go ahead, Counselor McGillis.
I might have jumped the gun here to support this motion, but now that you said my name earlier. I just think that all we have to do instead of going into a long spiel about how we the county should do their financing is just. Ask for a report, give us a report back, make a decision in terms of where we're going to take the money from and and what reserves we're going to take it out of. And count and county council make a decision based on that, on the report. That's how fast we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, you've heard the motion on the table. All in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. And we'll move right into eight key information, transportation services, draft signage bylaw update. Should on.
Uh, thank you. Yes. And just I wanted to bring this to council's attention, just to give council a good opportunity to have or an opportunity to have a look at. Some of the things we're we're looking at for a draft update or an update to our signage bylaw. You know, some some changes and really just to kind of capture some best practices and 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 deal with some of the the quirks of of our bylaw right now. Very, very briefly, I've provided you a copy of the old bylaw plus the draft new bylaw and some of those modifications that I'm talking about include. Just we've reorganized some of the text to improve the readability and interpretation of the bylaw. We're including definitions for digital signs, residential areas, and actually expanding the definition of sign as well. Just to make sure it's covering all aspects of what a sign could be. Including a definition for visual nuisance, clarifying encroachments of signs in the right of way. And how to deal with those, not only like physical, you know, on the ground encroachments, but also aerial encroachments, which we do see in some of our hamlets where the right of way is at the building face. And if we have a. Projecting sign like, you know, how do how do we manage those things? We strengthened some of the provisions regarding the operation of digital signs. We clarified some grandfathering with respect to billboard spacing. Clarifying signs need to be installed within six months of a permit being issued. Adding provisions about revoking permits and whenever we are refacing signs that we are exempting fees. So if someone. Is just, you know, they have the existing sign frame, but they have a new logo. They want to just take the old face off, put the new face on. Still need to go through a permit just to make sure that we're kind of capturing and and double checking that everything is copacetic. But there's no fee associated with that. So those are the the items that we're bringing forward in the draft bylaw. We're going to. Kind of put it out there and allow if we get some public. Feedback on some of these changes, but, you know, right now certainly want to present it to council. And if there's any any ideas, thoughts, suggestions of council, I'd happy to hear it.
Thank you, Counselor Byfels, please.
Thank you, Warden, and and thank you, Ben, for bringing this draft sign by law to to council. I'm glad to see that our solicitor had a heavy hand in in rewarding what we had. In fact, I read through our new bylaw. It was. It was very clear. It was concise. It dealt with any potential issues that could be foreseen. I didn't even read our old stuff. I think this is what we need to do as a county to. Not only deal with our current signs, but to be forward thinking and and work with those who want to put up this type of signage going down the road and. As much as. Commercial businesses need signs, and I recognize that those signs can interfere with the livelihoods of the of the people that are already living in the area and. So I think this clarifies that it it very specific. You know, it's unfortunate that we've had to do these things, but I think it's the right thing to do and. As soon, you know, the sooner we can get this passed, the the better, in my opinion. I don't see any issues with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I I realize the changes in this recent draft bylaw are more to do with the the digital aspect of the signage bylaw. But going through it, I did. I did notice that temporary signs are somewhat addressed in this bylaw and. I'm, you know, personally not a fan of temporary signs. They are broadly considered to be visual pollution. And generally speaking, do not add to the aesthetics of any community. I know that North Glengarry, we're going to be reviewing our signage bylaw sometime, hopefully sooner than later. And I'm just wondering how this bylaw. How the details of of the temporary signage anyway. How that that would work if, you know, if if North Glengarry was to. To put restrictions, for example, on temporary. Signs on on our main streets in particular. Given that the main street in Alexandria, for example, is a county road, how? Would would the county bylaw supersede the local one? How would how would that work?
And I'm going to asterisk this, I'm not a lawyer. I believe your zoning would allow you to to restrict or prohibit those. But you know what? I'm happy to ask our solicitor that that exact question. Just it's I, to me, it's a very straightforward question that could be easily answered by a solicitor. So. How about I bring that back to our solicitor and just ask very, very simply if a local municipality is looking to prohibit temporary signs? Is there any kind of conflict with what our bylaw says? I I don't think so. I see it's it's layered between the two. And just because it's okay here, it might not mean it's okay here, and therefore they still aren't allowed. But that's my kind of non loyal lawyerly opinion.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGillis.
I was just cautioning Counselor Williams, temper temporary signs are are campaign signs too as well. So be cautious when you pass your bylaw. Because we, I'd say four, five, six years ago. We had an update in our signage bylaw, which is. It actually, it, there's a lot of controversy over that too, when the time that we did that, because everybody had, you know, they wanted their thing. They wanted their say, which is great, but it sometimes that creates some some animosity. You both sign.
Point well taken. Thank you, Counselor McGillis.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing none. Thanks, Mr. Don. We'll wait for the report coming back with a bylaw to later date. Okay, so I think that's pretty much it. So we're going to move into a closed session. So I'll have the clerk read a motion, please.
It's moved by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counsel Fraser, that the council proceeding camera pursuant to section two thirty nine two B of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. And F, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose for matters related to human resources matters and bylaw enforcement matter.
Okay, thank you. You heard the motion all in favor. Motion's carried while.